Call the E-Lors, help me stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Vote for her, please call her.
Virgess.
Mayor.
Gordon.
Myers.
Mayor.
Casco.
Mayor.
Washington.
Mayor.
Wood.
Here.
Alright, may the record show that Judge Gordon did call, let me know if he was supportive or made a consent in case of work. Move to agenda two, call the comments. All questions and comments will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker will get an opportunity to speak for three minutes on the topic on the agenda only. Each speaker will be allowed to speak once. Any questions or comments from the audience?
Hi, is the light on? Yeah, turn it on.
How much you see, can you help us? Just hold it for a second, the light turns green. Is the light green?
Yeah.
If you hold it for a second, it should turn blue.
There you go.
Alright, go ahead.
Judy Gatz here. I didn't have any questions. I wanted to tell again that there's a water pouring out of a house on the corner by me and it's, we've been calling since Friday and the water is still running and it is now creating ice on the road on Merrill Avenue as well as 223rd Street. Supposedly, they're contacting the homeowner, it's an empty house. But what I really got up here for was to say that trustee Virgess has a birthday Saturday and I would like to wish him a happy birthday at that time.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Virgess. Really?
Thank you very much.
And you'll be, what, thirty-nine?
You'll make me be a politician?
Yeah.
No, really, I'm proud, I'll be sixty-two.
Wow. So, good luck, Virgess. Next.
Rose Langston. I just want to compliment the public works and the heads of people for the wonderful job they're doing, even though they're short of force. And I also want to thank the attorney for taking care of one of the FOIA's for us on the senior event. And I want to compliment the mayor for his event on Friday and for the housing also. They did an excellent job. Unfortunately, I couldn't make either one.
Alright, thank you very much. Anyone else? See no one else, so move to end of the three reports of officers. What do I remember, any mayor's report? First of all, I'd like to make an announcement and kind of excited about this announcement. On Friday, hang on, my prepared statement, we'll go back to the prepared statement. But on Friday, just so the board knows, we signed all the loan agreements for the IEP. So, we received, and just so the board realizes, the amount, four point eight, maybe four million eight hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. So, we signed out paperwork on Friday. But kind of the prepared statement, the IEP recently forwarded loan agreement to the village for the water improvement project. Loan agreement has been executed and the village now has funding for the water treatment improvement project. The IEP is approved, village's contract award for the project, the village will be issuing a notice to proceed to its contractors within the next sixty days. Once the notice to proceed is issued, loan agreement and the consent order requires that the village complete the project within three hundred sixty-five days. After the completion of this project, the village will submit an application to the IEP for permit approval for the village's permanent vinyl chloride treatment equipment. Temporary equipment will remain in place until the time the village continues to test its water supply to ensure that no contaminants occur. Permanent equipment, which will be installed, will further ensure that the village's water supply will be safe per construction for the foreseeable future. So, seems like it's been a long road. I'd like to thank Robinson Engineering for their work, but I'd like to thank Olsson and Serk for their help, especially Bert, who was very helpful making sure that everything moved through the proper channels as it was supposed to. So, everything now is moving forward on that. The other thing, which was already mentioned, was the Chicago South Line Economic Development Corporation Winter Forum we had here last Friday. I think it was a great success. I'd like to thank everyone for their participation, for their help, the department heads. I totally, no one realizes how much work was involved when we had multiple meetings with department heads, with volunteers. I think Debbie and I probably met, seemed like daily, making sure that everything was where it's supposed to be. So, we had a great event for the residents that were not involved. First of all, I'd like to thank the residents who weren't involved, the volunteers, municipalities, the mayors came up and just praised our volunteers. They liked our facilities, they liked the fact that we had people out there working and helping and so I do appreciate that. But for the residents who were not aware what was going on, last Friday, we hosted the Chicago South Line Economic Development Forum here at Village Hall. Our guest speakers were Senator Dick Durbin, Ken was one of our guest speakers, Congressman Kelly was one of our guest speakers, and of course, Eric Wilk, Eric Wilk, that felt the crowd of over two hundred that were here a little bit about South Village, what we had to offer. So, it was a great day for South Village, for its residents, and talking with some of the other events coordinators and stuff, we're looking at having more events here in South Village, so allows us to showcase our community. So again, I'd like to thank everyone, I know I'm probably missing people, but there was a lot of people that were involved in making this happen. I'd like to thank our sponsors, we had sponsors that sponsored the food that we had, which was Inbridge, and that certainly was a sponsor of the food, so I hope the trustees knew about that, but we're thankful for that also. So, a great day for South Village, a great event, and again, everyone pitched in and made it. It wasn't just myself, it wasn't just one individual, it took the whole entire village working together, which we saw last Friday. So I'd like to say thank you again, I appreciate it as your mayor. With that said, I'd like to move to I.D., vote clerk, if anyone wants to.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to say that we will be going to the Blue Trail High School on February fourth, holding voters registration, trying to attract students that will be turning eighteen for November. It's really a wonderful thing that they changed that law, that you can now register to vote in, vote in the primary, March primary, at the age of seventeen. So I will be showing several people on February fourth at Blue Trail High School. Also, I'd like everybody who has the committee or commission, the elected officials, department heads, check the February calendar and make sure that everything is up to date as you see fit according to your reading, so that we can finalize that calendar. And also, I'd like to say that the E-LAS is being very well received, I'm very excited about it, we're close to a hundred subscribers in the first full month that it's been up. And I'm asking that everybody contact four or five people, ask them just a simple question, have you signed up for E-LAS yet? During that cold weather and the emergencies and the oil orders and just meeting dates and different changes, it's been very well received because people are getting their information faster than they could if they went to website or checked Facebook page. So, I'm very thankful for those people who have signed up, and I'm just asking to pass the word out. And last thing, Friday was a fantastic event, I was very proud to be a part of it. I talked to several people I had never met before, with the over two hundred people that were here, and the one thing that impressed me most is they walked up to me and said, "We have a fantastic staff and a fantastic group of volunteers." They want us to take our volunteers and put them in their pocket and take them with them and everything like that. More than one person said, "Why, how did you get people to work like that? How did you get your staff and your volunteers to put this together?" And so, in saying that, I'd like to thank Heidi Carver, Sharon Noet, Linda Todd, Bob and Rose Ketchum, Pat Couch for the welcoming, first group was the kitchen, Sony did a fantastic job, and Eric Wilk, thank you so much for the video, which will be on the website probably before you get home tonight. I want to thank you guys very much for the love and being a part of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's very helpful.
Thank you very much, and you know what? Thank you also for bringing all this together. Real quick on the E-Lers, we haven't seen one complaint, just so that you can talk to each other about it. I'm asking residents that if you sign up for your E-Lers and you're not receiving them, please let us know, we definitely want to know. And make sure you check your spam filters, make sure you don't have, because these E-Lers may come across as spam, so you may not receive them. Make sure that you can't accept them and receive them, and if you're not receiving them, go back to the website and sign up again, and then let us know for sure.
Or contact.
Or contact the vote clerk. Right. So, I mean, this is open up for everyone, it's not just for vote residence, and I just saved a complaint that came across, and I'm going to make sure that it's available. So, yeah, well, definitely, we'll research everything to make sure no one's being kicked off, this is open up to everyone. Again, we want people to receive this information, and again, this is information given out about our community and what's going on, so I definitely want to make sure that we make that note. Alright. There's a couple of the reports here of officers and department heads, but we did make it where they didn't have to be here tonight, the weather and stuff like that, so. So, move to vote attorney, Mr. Rick Raff.
I'd like to, no report.
Vote attorney, please, to resign. Just want to say that we're excited for the water project to start, and we're planning a pre-construction meeting, which should take place in a couple weeks, and then we're looking at construction starting in the late February or early March. Who's more important? Thank you very much. Move to your courts trustees and board committees, Department of Rights, trustee Nast.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This couple things, the next Department of Rights will be February sixth at Community Center at six P.M. And everybody, welcome to come on by. Also, the basketball program is continuing, we'll be playing basketball over there at eleven o'clock every Saturday from now through April. So, if you want to come by and see, give us a piece of support, we're having some good games and a lot of fun over there. So, come on by, thank you for that, it's very important, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee. Move to I.C. or District Committee, trustee Marge.
Thank you very much, a couple items. First of all, Friday, I thought Friday was great. Yeah, I had a chance to see the senator, and he gave out to, ironed my information to us, basically about the budget, and the continued Friday night meeting, we had a great time, so I ended with that, we went along and discussed a lot of stuff with different residents. Overall, Friday was fantastic, I went to speak to the mayor, the entire committee presented all of it, it was great. Orders, just not really working on awards now, our meeting will be on Thursday, February. I believe the chief has a couple, Angie, we get to a meeting, we're reviewing, otherwise I will cancel meetings other than that, but that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Move to I.D. or Neighborhood Relations Committee, trustee Virgess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to, for the mayor to read the proclamation honoring Patsy Louise Nichols, if anyone doesn't know who she is, she's the former, she's the wife of the first mayor of South Village. And I think we should, something we can start doing, not just with that, but other things too, so if you could, Mr. Mayor, if you could read that.
Be glad to. Proclamation. Honoring Patsy Louise Wedmore Nichols. Whereas, Patsy Wedmore Nichols graduated in nineteen forty-nine from Saint Joseph Academy in South Bend, Indiana. And whereas, Patsy Wedmore Nichols had a lifelong love of dance and music, becoming a dance instructor at Arthur Murray Dance Studios in Chicago, Illinois. And whereas, Patsy Wedmore Nichols met her husband, Thomas J. Nichols, and the couple married and settled down in the Indian Hills Garden section to raise a family in what was once known as New Strasburg in nineteen fifty-six, shortly after completion of the Kindred Expressway. And whereas, Patsy Wedmore Nichols and husband, Thomas Joseph Nichols, were one of the first few residents having helped organize their neighbors and help the village of South Village to incorporate as a village under the laws of the state of Illinois. And whereas, Patsy Wedmore Nichols would see her husband become the first village president and mayor of the new village of South Village on April eighteenth, nineteen fifty-seven. And whereas, Patsy Wedmore Nichols served the people of South Village from nineteen fifty-seven to nineteen sixty-five as South Village's very first first lady, the entire time helping her beloved husband, Tom, as he endured many long and tireless days helping South Village through the enormous war and pains of the first eight years. And whereas, Patsy Wedmore Nichols lost the love of her life, Thomas Nichols, on January second, nineteen eighty-one, most fortunate to find happiness once more in her late husband, Edward Gillis. And whereas, it has pleased our all mighty God to take his servant, Patsy Nichol Gillis, home on November first, two thousand thirteen, just short of her eighty-third birthday this past December twelfth. And whereas, the mayor and village board trustees commend the work of Patsy Wedmore Nichols Gillis as South Village's first first lady, and as an advocate of her community, and wishes to extend our heartfelt thing due to her family for all she has done for the village of South Village. Now therefore, I, David A. Hanks, mayor of South Village, hereby proclaim January twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, as Patsy Wedmore Nichols Day, dated this day, twentieth day of January, two thousand fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, you know, this is good. This is good copy to the clerk, and then go onto the files, our deal files and family. And that is my report, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Move to neighborhood watch committee, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to make an announcement, a reminder that the neighborhood watch meeting is going to be moving from Thursdays to Mondays starting in February. Our very first meeting will be Monday, February the tenth, we'll sleep at the fire station. The meeting will begin at six-thirty instead of at seven. So we're moving the date from Thursday to Monday, the second Monday of the month, and we're moving our starting time from seven o'clock P.M. to six-thirty P.M. at the fire station. Also, I want to just, everyone, we're going to have a guest speaker who I think will watch at our meeting in February, Mr. Robert T. Brown, he is the sole proprietor of his business, our TV Security Academy, and with the new laws for concealed care, he's going to explain some of those laws to us, as well as some other interesting facts, so I'd like to invite those that can and stop by today, we're going to watch the meeting on the second Monday of February, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee. Move to I.D. of Relations and Community Outreach Partnership Committees, trustee Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Relations Committee will not be meeting next week, Wednesday. Our meeting will be scheduled for later on in the month to accommodate student government day judging, and people, you're still looking for donations for student government day, which should be the fourth Tuesday in March, and it's coming up quickly. That's all I have for that report. And for the Community Outreach Partnerships Committee, our committee will be meeting next Tuesday at six P.M. before the board meeting, our committee meeting, and the committee has asked Mayor Hanks and Chief Levis to attend, and they both have accepted. So, we will be there to let some of the committee members know that I see that they will both be there, so we will hopefully let out.
They're before or after the election? Yeah.
We will be watching the agenda right close.
Alright, move to reports of departments, committees, and commissions. Move to the fire department, and the ninety-one commission, chief officer.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Over the past two weeks, the fire department responded to twenty-two calls, five car accidents, six firearms, two medical assists, four C.O.s, three gas leaks, and assist to another agency. Once again, we'll be having temperatures below zero, so please watch out for your elderly neighbors. Please try to check on them as much as possible and make sure that they're on okay. And that is the result of the plan, I put this estimate. Over the past two weeks, has responded to twenty-seven calls, six car accidents, four firearms, four COs, three gas leaks, around eight school controls, one assist to another agency.
Alright, thank you very much, and again, I'd like to say thank you very much to the fire department, they've been working long hours making sure that the fire department is open for the board meetings, especially at night during these cold spell. If I remember right, tonight's the last night, we'll be open overnight, is that correct?
Tonight's the last.
Tonight. Hopefully tonight's the last night. So, thank you very much. Move to police department, Chief Levis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the time period of January fourteenth through current date, we've had a total of six hundred and forty calls of service, forty-six of which were suspicious activity, suspicious robbery, one hundred and five traffic services, eighty other services, twenty-three partner violations, forty-nine verbal alarms, forty-four ambulance assistance, and sixty-three building checks. There were also sixty-two arrests for that same time period, which included fourteen road arrests. One other quick, last week I attended a conference, a police conference, one of the largest, it's a demonstration now currently, there was about seventy thousand attendees. Was able to make quite a few contacts there, members, and various other manufacturers, you have to help the police department along, so. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief. We'll go down to Human Relations Commission, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to, thankfully, when they came to the diversity dinner on Friday night, it was a great auspicious occasion, we had a lot of people there, we had a lot of fun, the topics were very interesting, and we had great conversation. I learned a lot from a lot of new people, and I just want to recognize all the commissioners in the audience tonight, Commissioner Frank, would you raise your hand, Commissioner Steve, would you raise your hand? I'll be there for commissioners from Human Relations Commission, I just want to thank, excuse me, all of those, clerk Debbie Williams, and other sponsors that helped to get that banner, everyone, to get that banner here on time. I mean, the banner was beautiful, we had a brand new banner that we had to get before the event Friday, and it was ready, and I just want to thank all the volunteers and all the people that came out to help the Human Relations Commission with our very first diversity dinner, on behalf of all of the commissioners, it was a great event. Thank you, mayor, for coming by, I know you have a very busy schedule, we enjoyed having a vote out with you as well, so thank all of the board of trustees that stopped by as well, to the trustee Myers, thank you all for your support, on behalf of the Human Relations Commission, and that concludes my report.
I did stop by for a few minutes, I tell you, it was a great event, I think you had what, over a hundred that were there, and I tell you what, the food's so fantastic, I almost wanted to grab, I was watching people go through the line, fill in their plates, I said, wow, I almost wanted to grab one of those plates myself.
Excuse me, mayor, if I can, just want to say I see school board member Melvin in the audience, Stevens, would you raise your hand? The school board was very well represented at the diversity dinner, superintendent was there, Mr. Travellini, the president, Ms. Davenport, Dolores, school board member, Green, Melvin Stevenson, so I mean, they had a great representation from the school board, and I just thank you all for coming over and sharing with the Human Relations Commission too as well.
Yes, thank you very much. School board was very well, I see they were here during student government day, participated in the diversity dinner, and I hope that superintendent schools was here on Friday, so we do appreciate the working relationship that South Village has with the school boards, so thank you very much. Move to housing commission, Mr. Wilk.
No report.
Thank you very much. Move to senior committee, this is my show.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to let you know that Bill Johnson, senior committee luncheon, the next one is Wednesday, February nineteenth, theme is that's a morning, the love Italian style with sounds of Frank Rossi, the Glenwoodie Golf Club. Ticket sale deadline is Wednesday, February twelfth. They have senior township, they have senior chair exercise on Fridays, ten, eleven. Suburban Legal Assistant Clinic, the fourth Tuesday by appointment, blood pressure screening third Wednesday by appointment. They have the assistant of health insurance, but the Illinois Senior Insurance Program counseling is available. They will be having, doing tax preparation, and that's by appointment. They do have low cost transportation within the township, the senior wheels, you don't need to call the township for any additional information or services. Events for the senior committee, we continue with our free monthly blood pressure screening for all village resident, the village employees in the senior center office. Next one is Monday, February the third, from one to one forty-five, and every first Monday. Our paper, but book exchange continues, and we want to thank the volunteers for their donation. Blood pressure screenings and monthly senior movie, next one is parental guidance, it's on Monday, February tenth, which is co-sponsored with library, that's at twelve-thirty. And our Friday senior social activity dates will be posted on the monthly calendar. A prior listing, senior events and activities are available in the literature rack in the lobby. And we also, for anyone interested in other events, there is a senior center survey available. The Fun Club meets every second, and one Sunday at three P.M. The Sunshineers elected twenty fourteen officers on January twentieth. The officers are Rose Kitchen, president, uh, Kitchen vice president, Rose Langston secretary, Liam Leonard treasure, and Podden and Sergeant Arms. Their next meeting is on Monday, February third at seven P.M. The Leisure Timer's first meeting of the year will be on Wednesday, February twelfth at five P.M. Ceramic's group meet every Wednesday from eight to eleven A.M. South Village Bluegrass continues every Sunday from six to ten, however, two Sundays is not announced due to the weather. Golden Aiers will be this, will be meeting Wednesday, February nineteenth at Jones Community Center, that's at two two old fifteenth street, Chicago Heights. They have a ten o'clock social hour, ten-thirty meeting, and lunch at eleven-thirty. Cost of lunch is five dollars, and requires reservation, number is seven five seven five three nine five. Their annual dues for the year twenty fourteen are now being collected. The Cook County Spurs installment text bill were mailed, mailed, and the due date is March fourth. There is a late penalty of one point five percent monthly will apply to anyone that missed the deadline. Just a reminder, qualified seniors must complete and return their annual either senior or free tax exemption application in order to receive their exemption on the second installment. Blood drive is Sunday, February sixteenth, from nine A.M. to one P.M. Did you recall, St. James' Catfish? And there would be no tax preparation at McConaughey Public Library, however, the our tax warrant would be available. The next senior committee meeting will be held on Thursday, February thirteenth at five P.M. Committee scheduled their sixth chili cook-off for Saturday, March twenty-ninth, and we'll be looking for chili chef. Thank you, this is my report.
Thank you. Move to end of six, this is agenda, is there anything the trustee should be, anything that we need, questions, comments? Are you done? As for motion to approve the consent agenda, that is.
Oh, sorry.
Motion accepted, vote for her, please, call her.
Virgess. Yeah. Gordon. Myers. Yes. Casco. Yes. Washington. Yes. Wood. Seth.
With that, number seven, new business, we have motion to approve the compensation on this person's for January fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, through January twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, there are motions to approve.
Oh.
All motions accepted, questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee Virgess.
Let's have a couple of us, mayor. I know we received an email stating that we would have to move money, was money moved?
Yes, it was, it's in the payroll.
And who was contacting?
Should the trustee should have received the email?
I mean, did anyone get your consent, is what I'm saying, I mean, they asked, we talked about it, but I just wondered, where did it come from, and did you get a consent, consensus, or?
I don't know if there's consensus, I mean, the village board has known about this for, we've talked about this for months. We talked about this for months about getting closer to the end, not having money. In fact, pardon my, seeing the village address talked about having to borrow money from the water fund. The fact is that the trustees were all informed prior to money being moved. I don't know if anyone contacted saying not to move money, but the fact that the money was moved only to make payroll and payroll liabilities, that's what money was moved for. And the amount that was needed for that amount. So I know Mohan came to talk to me and said she let the trustees know regarding the consensus. I don't know if any trustees that would have said, no, we're not going to make payroll. And that's why the money was moved for payroll, man.
Oh, no, I understand. I'm just wondering, I think we need, I know the lawyers have gone, we need to vote on moving money from that particular entity to the general room. That's what I'm looking at. That's the first question. Do we have to not make it legal or public that we actually move this money from the water fund? And number two, I don't know how much. I know we talked, it was two different prices. One was seventy, then it went to one-twenty. And I'm just wondering, I don't know what amount was moved and where it was moved from.
I don't have that in front of me, but I'm looking at total liabilities for payrolls, a hundred fifty-two thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy cents. So I know that that right there had to be covered.
Did all that come out of the water? That's what I'm saying. Did all that come out of the water?
I don't want to say yes, I don't want to say no, but I know that whatever we didn't have enough money for to make that payroll, that amount was taken.
Yeah, that's what I was just trying to figure. How much came out of water?
And I thought it was part of the email they sent out to the trustees.
No, he just, he just, he had it broken up, seventy-two and seventy-four, something like that. And I'm just wondering, so we can get a figure actually, how much it was, so we can have a record, how much we actually took out to pay the payroll. I mean, I know you're saying one-fifty or something, but I just wanted to have a definitive number of how much we actually took out of the water fund so we can keep a record, you know, so we're good.
Definitely. The record's kept, and he should have it available. We should be able to get that information because as the tax revenue money comes in, that money all makes the escape back.
Right. That's what I'm wondering. That's the reason, that was the reason for that. The second, the second question, I know Mohan's not here. He hasn't been, and I haven't been back before. REM, R E M, can I get it? I'd like to get an invoice to find out what service did they provide? Because it was an abbreviated service. We had to do one thing, then we changed it. And I just wanted to know, I just wanted to get an invoice to see exactly what service was provided to the village for that invoice. I want, I wish I could, I'd like.
We could pull the invoice, but nothing changed what was presented to the board prior to them looking for, or going to the deputy chiefs elections.
Right. Did they do, I know they didn't pay you. I think they didn't finish.
Everything's finished, and everything's been presented to the board? Or not to the board, it's been presented to me? And I do have all the information.
Okay.
So it's probably something that's going to be talked about very shortly. But they've already done all their evaluations. They've done all their testing. They went through all the resumes and stuff. In fact, there was only two individuals, and they made their recommendations. I have everything sitting on my desk.
I know we're getting paid now, so much we paid, and so I just wanted to make sure everything was satisfied.
Yes, that's a job. And I don't know, the chief's sitting right there. I don't know if he has any, had any issues with R E N for the work that he provided?
I don't know.
Okay. And I've already talked to the chief. I think we talked to him a bunch of times. And pretty much know exactly which direction that we'll be heading. But we come to the fore on this one under a special session.
The last thing, we did talk about, but the email that I got stated that it was either coming out of water or Teflon. I just wondered, that's why, that's why I wanted to find out. I didn't hear any more on it. Did any come out of Teflon at all? I see there's some related expenses here in the accounts table, but there was any money transferred for payroll out of Teflon. And that's what I was asking.
And that's a question for more?
Right. I was hoping. But I do, I do want to get that. Mr. Mayor, who do we find, how do I find out about the, because I haven't seen it here yet, that we paid the, the grant. Have we paid everything?
You talking about lobbyists?
Lobbies, I'm sorry, the lobbyists.
I think we paid everything.
Okay.
We have a new voice, we have.
You said we have a new voice?
We have paid it.
Okay. I just wanted to, I heard you talking about this.
Because they were here Friday. You didn't talk to them?
No. I mean, everybody was here Friday.
Yeah, he was lobbying for Saw Village, so.
I mean, they were here, but I didn't get a chance to talk to them.
Right. I just wanted to. And there's two people that are from the lobbyists on Friday.
Yeah. But I mean, had they, we haven't paid it yet, but.
I don't think we've paid it yet.
But I asked.
I know, I know, I got an email asking more on paying it. So I don't think we've paid it yet.
But I just wanted to get an invoice with R E M and then also want to find what accounts that were taken because it's not here, and you did it.
I don't trust him to give it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
But you're the layup, so you might come back and work on it?
Yeah, I would, I would. I've been trying to contact Mohan. I don't know if he's sick or whatever. We got a busy Friday, and I've worked all this week kind of late. So I know we haven't been able to cross paths. I just, that's why I was saying, I'm hoping you'll be here today so I can find that out. You know, I'll ask, and I just, that's it. Thank you.
All right, no problem. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Here comes Mr. York.
Urges.
Yes.
Or Myers.
Baskin.
Yes, Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
All right. We'll kind of write the following comments from the mayor and board of trustees. Start with trustee, uh, Burgess.
Thank you.
Trustee Myers.
Oh, sure.
Trustee Baskin.
I think so.
Trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mayor.
I knew you did.
Two quick things. Number one, I've been asked by residents as well as just the committee wanting to know about the signs that we have now. I let them know they're excited about the signs being posted. When the Neighborhood Watch signs began to be posted, I let them know with the weather permits and the rest clear, it's at the discretion of the mayor at this point. You know, do that stuff before it snows. Then we get some time, and they'll start. I kept and I would talk a little bit. So you can put the smaller ones, but we do the one by the expressway. People that want to be out there, like between, you know, let somebody to be out there to take that photo off. So other than that, that's information I've been conveying to the residents. Also, I want to just have some clarity on the amount that you talked about for the water, infrastructure in your report.
All right.
What did you say?
You talking about the loan?
Yes.
What do you want to know?
The amount and what that really means.
The amount is four million, eight hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars. And this is the loan through the I E P A set at a one point nine percent annual fixed loan rate. And this is for putting all the permanent air strippers at all three locations, iron removal system. And there's other things, frag tanks and all the kinds of engineering that I'd like to tell you more about. But once we get done, I think we'll very much be able to say we have three brand-new wells.
So we actually got this money?
That's the one? Yes.
Well, that is great.
Okay.
You got paid back.
I know that's my way of saying. I mean, when I give borrow my money from people, I want what I want right then, I pay you back.
Oh, okay.
But I'm going to go with the tell the residents with clarity. So I'm going to give that loan for four billion dollars at one point nine percent from the I E P A to start the infrastructure, right?
The wells. Right. There's three infrastructure and wells.
Right.
The infrastructure that I look at being the pipes and stuff or even the streets. This is the three wells that we have. Currently, one of three has been, one number three has been turned off since two thousand nine. Construction will start the wall, the wall number three first. So that's one of our largest, largest wells, if you want to say. Single well by itself is one of our largest ones. That one will be up and running first, and then we move two wells on one and two after that.
That is awesome. Thank you.
And trustee, I know you're anxious about getting those signs up. However, there's a lot of, that's awesome.
I'm waiting for the weather to bring some code.
Definitely. But just so everyone knows, our public works department has been working tirelessly between the ploughings and streets. You know, we've got some warranty breaks. They're very much aware of the house on the street from Judy. Trying to deal with the owner, that's what the department brought to my attention twice. So they are out there working. I think if you notice, the snow never comes at a convenient time. So they're out there working night, they're working day. They go home, sleep for a few hours, they come back out for ploughing snows again. And that's one thing that, if you notice, all around is roads have been closed except for within Saw Village.
That's right.
So we can move within our community, but it seems like we can't get out of our community. But they are out there working and making sure that roads are cleared for the residents. But we will get your signed up.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, we can't.
Yep, trustee Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, nothing. I just want to say, just say a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to give credit where credit is due. And wholeheartedly, I just wanted to tell the people that may not know, I've gone to a lot of these in-house economic development seminars all throughout South suburbs. I've been doing it for maybe four years. And I will say this, and, you know, in all fairness, our seminar that was presented here last Friday was probably one of the most well-attended. Now, the deck was stacked, but it was one of the most well-attended that I've seen throughout the South suburbs. I mean, you've had numerous mayors, you had numerous representatives, and for the very first time since I've been here, and I don't know of anyone else, but for the very first time, you had a US senator to actually come to Saw Village. Just another one. I don't know, if that, he got a little perturbed. I didn't tell him, I didn't tell the mayor this. But I did talk to his staff, I guess you would call his staff in command, and told him about our water. He knew about it. I told him about, we need money, we need help. And I didn't tell the mayor this, this is the very first time I mentioned it, that I told him that we have, we are for a community. We're going to have to go out and get a grant which is going to fall on the people. Can the government help us with this grant?